We're live.
Okay, we're live. I hope we're live.
Well, we're above the ground anyways.
Bring that up. It is what it is.
Yeah.
Trucking. Lost the drive shaft in the truck coming up memory today, coming up out there, so steep. Rigs are right out.
Okay, welcome everybody. We are here for our Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024 Selectments Meeting. Happy New Year to all. Anyways, so let's do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call it's a short one. Dave's still, I think he's heading back traveling with his family, but we have
Normandy Blake is here.
And Marlo Harris. And so we're two announcements, mister.
I just have one announcement. The next Select Board meeting will also be on a Tuesday, two weeks from tonight, January 16th, because of the holiday on the 15th. And that follows up, the town office will be closed on Monday, the 16th.
Very good.
What's the holiday?
Department heads, come on down.
Come on down. We're on the road.
And I'd like to think you're gonna win a prize, but probably not.
Oh, we haven't won yet. Haven't won one yet, so why stop now?
Went to a dog show once, took first place.
Do you trim it?
Oh, no. Yeah. Okay.
Apparently he's going first. He didn't even ask you this.
Oh, no, he always, he tells me, you go first. So I just kind of follow suit now.
Age before beauty.
Oh, they know that about that. Well. As of the last financial report, 12/22, we spent $263,658.14 out of our 23 budget. $306,251, so we still get almost 14%. We got 13.91% left of our budget. So we'll have more than 13% left at the end of the year, probably did have. December 1st to 31st, 24 motor vehicle stops. The office has handled 42 calls for service. And these are the typical ones. Department information, domestic violence petitions, motor vehicle complaints, motor vehicle accidents, residential burglary crimes, road hazards. We had one night of numerous road hazards.
Really?
Yeah.
You think somebody's doing it on purpose?
No, that was all the stuff we found, trees across the road.
Oh, 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 that's right. Yeah, the big windstorm. Yeah, yeah.
We had a nasty night.
Yeah, you guys helped me quite a bit. Well, you worked together.
You worked quite a bit. Suspicious activity reported, sex offender registries, assisted fire EMS, assisted other police departments, one sudden death reported, citizens assist disturbance calls, and any other complaints.
No wild parties for, um...
Wild party in a while. Hopefully, the next one will be ours. That's the way to have it, I think. We're gonna have one when the money will do it.
Okay then.
Every one of our guys did all our training for the year. Actually, we went over in our hours for training that the academy requires. And all the performance evaluations were turned in last week, so we're good to go as of before the first. Short and sweet.
Wonderful. We'll plan to make this meeting go fast.
Yeah.
You know, Dave's gonna get back and watch this and go, geez, Dave.
All good.
It is good.
It's fun.
It is good.
They need to go home too.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, me too. Thank you. You're up.
Yeah, we'll start with the fire. We finished the year out with 219 calls, emergency calls, and they're doing their first call of the year right now, a medical call that the folks are on. We ordered the nozzles that you guys signed the POs for there the other night. The new fire truck, the cabin chassis has been built and it's at the bodybuilder. So they're gonna stop building the body and getting that together. So that's working. Yeah. Things are going smooth at the firehouse. The 26th of this month, we usually, sometimes we have our Christmas party at the fire station and sometimes we go out. But this year, they decided to have it at the firehouse, and it's gonna be on the 26th. This rip shack, I guess, is catering that, bringing the food. Couple of the members on the department set that up. So permission to use the firehouse for the dinner.
Certainly.
Well, no, it's been going great, but I, just so I don't get in trouble.
That's right. No. Party, you need a party.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we'll get together and you folks are invited if you want to come.
Sounds like a great time to me.
Whatever. Whoever, I don't care. It's all good. So we've been working at the firehouse on the new driveway going up back. This week, we're gonna dig the hole for Phil, so we can get it full of cement to get the new sign up.
Yep.
Before it snows, because I heard maybe next week we're gonna get a new weather pattern.
Yeah.
Four texts coming down?
Yep. That's what they said. Yeah.
They finally showed the thing that's making our lives miserable.
No matter what we do.
Yeah.
So that's what's going on at the firehouse.
That's good.
Well, you were on to the road, or you were talking about it.
About the driveway, and then I went on to the...
Luckily, we don't have snow, which is great, and you guys don't have to work hard in the crazy time yet. But it'll probably make it up in the next couple of months.
Yeah, which is fine.
And we live in the future.
Yes, sir.
So the roads. Other than the rain that we've had, some of my dirt roads aren't where I'd like to have them, but it hasn't been thawing out during the day either. It was too wet and yucky, so we went to grate them, to smooth them up. It would have made it worse. It left the ruts of the grater. But you wait until the afternoon, but it just hasn't warmed up. So I might have to in the next couple of days, is a couple, I might have to put a couple loads of dirt in and just fill the potholes in and hope for the best. So other than that.
What do you do with the potholes, like more in the pavement end? You try to do that more in the fall, right? Because we wouldn't want to do it.
Tar ones, you mean?
Tar, tar ones.
Oh, I did a bunch the other day down on Franklin Pier. So you get the propane heater out, because usually a lot of places have them big box heaters, but I mean, they're thousands of dollars. But no, I put a bucket of coal patch in last week.
Last week, did you came some of them?
Yeah, and went and got the worst ones, and they're just, and that stuff is hard, but it's, you just do your best.
Yeah, they pop up out of nowhere, but boy, when they pop up, they're...
Well, they're this big one day, and then you get a little rain, and then they're this big, so...
I just didn't know if you were doing any of those, this...
Well, if there's any that are horrible that you happen to see that I haven't seen, just send me a text or something.
Okay.
And, because I...
So you do, you do try to, and it's like you just pointed out, on some of the dirt roads, you may have to put a little bit of material.
Yeah, yeah, which that's, yeah.
Yeah.
The only thing with that is if it doesn't freeze into place, it might get, it's just...
Might get plowed.
There is a lot of, a lot of water in the ground everywhere, and...
A lot of water in the river, too. I'll tell you, it's, that river has not gone down at all. It's like, just like springtime. It would probably worse. Because it's coming into my property under the road.
Yeah, yeah, because they held some back, that last rainstorm, because I was keeping an eye on things and...
Wow. Did they tell you when they're gonna do that?
No.
No, they don't.
No.
Should be, but...
They got enough to do if they don't worry about us.
Okay.
But yeah, everything other than that, I guess, I've been out and about checking things, and the rain, the rain and the the rain and the wind there, the other storm, and if that would have been all snow, we would be in trouble.
Yeah, what would it been? Would it have been 16, 16 inches of snow?
Every inch is 12, I think. Every inch of rain is 12 inches of snow.
Well, I'm not even close to deep.
No.
Yeah, you're not.
It would have been four feet of snow.
Four feet, and it would have been three feet the week before.
Yep.
Yeah.
So there'd be some...
I suppose we all crap about what we get. Maybe we should...
We don't have it that it was raining.
I know, probably.
So Emmett, you've got the trees taken care of on Franklin Pier.
Yes, they came today and got the trees down on Franklin Pier.
And you brought me the bill, and we had talked last time. I need the board to okay me withdrawing it from the contingency fund. There was the tree to remove it from the house and those other trees that were dangerous. I did talk to the insurance, and they tell me that because there was no loss yet, they would not cover that. So we certainly tried to...
Wait a minute, no loss yet? What does that mean? The house had a roof smacked?
Uh, this is the...
Yeah, second one.
Oh, oh, oh.
The one, the tree that fell on the house, the insurance wouldn't cover because of the law that about hazards. If the town does not know about a hazard, it is not...
How do insurance company get away with all that stuff?
Well, that's why they make money.
Yeah, a lot of money.
Well, and you're not necessarily done with them, or are you?
Well, I don't think so, but...
No, because sometimes you gotta give them the little nudge.
But I think that, I just wanted to let you know where I was. So I have an $8,500 bill. And I'm hoping if the board wants me to take it out of contingency, I need the board to bless that.
Well, that's where we were talked about, that we had the money for it to come from.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, correct.
Yes, we did. And I'm very happy that we haven't had snow because the highway budget, we had enough trouble with that, so...
Because of roby road, you know, yeah.
I think just moving forward, it was a good decision, I think, that we made, but I think moving forward, we want to make sure that we maybe closer contact with the insurance people before we expel that money.
And of course, when we have a, when we have a situation like this that has to be addressed quickly, that's always the, that's always the hard...
Right, and I, Dana and I talked, and I, yeah, I think I, we've all learned a little
Lesson.
From this, and now we'll just have to deal with their insurance and our insurance and
Yeah, the headache part.
Hope for the best and and, but the other trees that were headed the other way, that got broke the same day, one went one way and then the others went the other. One tree luckily held them all up, so...
Now, when they, when they, I know, I think they refilled it and they cleaned it up too, correct?
Yeah.
Now, could we have just fallen it and not cleaned it up? But I didn't go look, so I'm just asking the question.
It's, I looked about getting a machine in there, and even taking the excavator and pushing that back. But you're pushing everything towards Pillsbury Lake.
Yeah.
And it's wet.
Yeah.
It's a wet area, and if something went wrong, I mean, if you were grabbing them with the, with the shear head or something, but it would have opened the hole, you would have had to open up quite an area to, to do what we did. It was, it was a lot of money.
But it's a lot of money to do it. I mean, I don't think we're questioning what
No, no.
Their cost and what they did. I just didn't know if they came in with a crane and they just cut it and then we didn't worry about cleaning it up.
No, no, they picked everything up.
Right, right, but if we were just to arrest it instead of having to pick it up, would have been my only question in my mind, you know?
Yeah.
But...
I shouldn't have said the comment I did about the insurance company about making money, because this is a pool insurance that we're in, so...
Well, everybody's in business to make money, so I don't think you said anything out of the...
I just wanted to make sure that it's understood that every town is putting into this insurance fund. And some towns are able to get more advantage than others, and I'm not saying more. We've been treated well by them in the past, so... I just wanted to straighten that out, because I say things I shouldn't sometimes.
Well...
No, the rest of us never do that.
No. Welcome to the club.
Right, yeah, right. I knew we couldn't have a club, couldn't we?
Yeah, really.
So if you would make a motion?
I make a motion to take the funds from the
Contingency Fund.
Contingency Fund and
$8,500.
Yeah, $8,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
See if I was kind of like, like an important person, they would just tell me what to say.
Hey, if I noticed that easy, I could have come up with something else.
All right, thank you, guys. Anything else? Everybody good?
I'm good. You good?
I'm sure these guys would love to...
Oh, I'm gonna go home and finish watering the cows. Hey, my donkey.
That was good. Well, thank you. So
Thank you so much.
Old budget, 2024 budget. I mean, old business, 2024 budget.
I had put that on there, not sure if Dave was gonna be here or not.
Okay.
I'd be glad to review it with you, but I don't think it's anything that you really probably
It would be better just to have us all here.
Would gain anything from it tonight, so that was on.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I was...
Happy New Year. When do we get to stop saying that?
You can say it, I think.
Okay, good.
The sixth.
Happy!
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so draft transfer station agreement ordinance.
That is the same situation.
Oh, oh, good, okay, so I do have a question, and I probably, I read through it, but I might need to like read again, but I guess my question is, I'm being asked by some people, the whole increase part of it, the price increase, is that even, that's not even part of this?
No.
Okay, that, when I was being asked, I was like, I don't think we've really discussed that. But they're here, and there could be a 60% increase on the price, to like, if somebody comes and gets your dumpster or whatever, and I didn't...
Well, it's funny that you say that, because I received a notice from our, the people that take care of our dumpster.
That's right, yes.
And the town of Hopkinton is raising prices for commercial haulers, from what I understand, proposed up to 60%.
Yes.
Wow.
I don't think that means it's for the towns up to 60%.
I got you, just the commercial haulers, yeah.
I believe it's the commercial haulers, but...
And do we have, do we have even a say in that, per se, because of this agreement? Guess that's what I'm trying to tell you. I was trying to hush you through there, but I, I wasn't sure.
I think that you should, or have a quarter of a say.
Right.
And, but this, this agreement is really, the main purpose of this agreement is to update it from the committee-driven to more of the Select Board driven. But I think, I didn't know about the 60% until I got the letter from the, from our...
So you hadn't heard, yeah, because when I was being asked, I thought, oh my gosh.
Yeah.
I don't remember hearing that, but, you know, things get going kind of fast and, and talk in two different directions, and I, I, I know we have the whole PFAS thing that we're all going to be responsible for, and I didn't know if that had something to do with it.
I'm not exactly sure. It seemed like kind of a stiff increase for me.
So can we, can I ask of you to maybe when we discuss the agreement, we'd like to know a little bit more about what the rumor mill is?
I'm suggesting, and I'd be glad to find out more if you'd like me to. But we had made a few adjustments to this amendment, so I guess I'm wanting to know from this board, are you comfortable with the adjustments that we made? And Neil is doing the same for Hopkinton, and then we really have one more meeting with the Hopkinton Select Board
Okay.
to, to hammer that out, and I think that is a great time to say, you know, what about this proposal that you're, that you're... And I don't even, I've not seen it from the board. I've just, I just heard it from...
Okay, good. Well, I'm just glad I didn't miss something, because usually you might pick up on that. So, yeah, if you could just make a note of that so that we don't
And the other thing in there is...
Get caught up in the agreement and forget about our...
Right. The other thing in that was the ordinance that also needed updating, which I...
But this is pretty much what we talked about.
I don't think there's anything that should be surprised.
And would you rather wait until Dave is back for that?
Well, I, I respect both the board members that are here, and I think you're perfectly willing to make a decision.
Okay, okay.
And I guess I will leave that up to you, if you feel more comfortable having...
Well, I mean, we've gone over it.
You've gone over it several times.
Yes, and it's pretty much, from what I can remember, what we talked about.
Different from last time in the agreement is, it was suggested that you might have an input on the hiring of key personnel. I put, I put that in there, and when I said key personnel, I'm thinking maybe the manager.
Yeah.
You don't want to get in the day-to-day
No, no.
And not for a quarter percent.
Of the staff, or, you know.
The odds that you're gonna, unless, I don't mean to say this, win. If you really had an issue, unless it was something majorly important, and I'm sure that if that was the case, we'd have a right to come to them and say, hey, we really have an issue with this staff member, and this is why.
Right. Well, and that would be, I would feel that would be a different type of...
That's right, that's right, but for us to be, have to have our approval every time they want to hire somebody.
Yeah, right, yeah, workers or something like that.
Even just hiring somebody these days anyways, it's a, it's a crap shot anyways.
Yeah, exactly.
Unless they got a, on the list or something. And that's not always even bad.
Sometimes it's to your advantage.
That's right.
No, I think that, you know, and I just put the key personnel, and we can certainly take that out or whatever, but that's...
But you put in their key, and you're just, you're stating the, you know, yeah, the operator, and there again,
Yeah.
it might just be nice to have a say, but I don't know how far your say is gonna go anyways, being only 25%.
Because you have a 25% interest, and also, I think that we are lucky that we don't have to oversee the day-to-day operation.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
And that, that certainly, we are expecting certainly some problems with this PFAS, things that need to be done, and the lagoons, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And as you know, the Capital Improvement Committee's talked about that quite a bit, trying to get us ready. I'm not, it's not something that's gonna have to be paved all at once, because they're gonna take a bond. We won't be taking a bond, but they will be taking...
Right, this is the good part, only being 25%.
So, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so are you good with me making, or do you want to make a motion to accept this agreement as written, right?
Yeah, that's all right. We can do that, if you don't mind. David, I don't think will care really.
I think, I feel like, but I just, sometimes I don't remember everything. I feel like...
Well, I think Dave has gone over this as well.
Yes, yes.
And I think that
He would have said something.
I don't think he had really, the suggestions he had, we've incorporated.
That's right, right.
All right.
So
Do I make a motion that we accept these, this ordinance?
For this agreement as written, okay?
Yes, written, right, with the changes that are here, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's how you want to say it. I second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
And so what I will do, I'll notify Hopkinton that you're set with the way it is.
Yep.
He's going to be meeting with his board next Monday.
Yep.
And then we'll probably set something up, maybe one of the third or fourth week of January. Something like that.
All right, so, any more correspondence?
I have a few correspondence items, as soon as I find them. I'll share them with you. Okay. Basically, Russ had gotten a quote for the town report, 1396, which is very similar to what I had last year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it wasn't last year, they have it, yeah.
And, and they...
And that's because we had to order a few more?
They really did a nice job for us, and they're very easy to work with. Russ has a good relationship with them.
That's important.
Well, the first year was a little...
Well, you get used to each other after a while.
Yeah, you get kind of molded.
Well, there was other circumstances with Dana, remember?
Yes.
It's easier though, every time you go through, it's easier to do a report.
And I can't tell you how delighted I am not to have to do it here.
Well, that first year was rough, and I don't think our printers can handle it. I don't think we can get one more town report out of it.
Well, we have to talk about the printer at an upcoming meeting.
Okay.
Stand by.
All right.
So that's really all the correspondence I had, other than the insurance correspondence, which I've spoken to you several times about.
Cool. And any public comment? Well, really, I didn't know that.
Oh, I have one comment. You know what? For the winter, I think we should be downstairs, because we don't get, except for like the public here. We don't get any, why are we heating this big giant place when we could just be downstairs? What do you think?
The only thing is the recording equipment's up here.
Well, you just have to change it. Can you do that? Just put...
Kind of a pain, but, yeah.
Oh, is it? Just get a plain old-fashioned tape recorder, just sit it there.
Well, I'm trying to work to see if I can get the Chromebooks to record it on a webcam. If we can do that, it wouldn't be that bad.
Now, I will explain to you how this room is heated.
Well, I was gonna ask that question.
Interesting.
Really?
It's an interesting situation. And I, and I, and I hear what you're saying, Dave.
Yeah, so, right.
I just look at the size of this and say, man, who would want to eat in my house?
This part of the room, there's a vent over there, and there's a vent over near that wall, and that is on the same system as the li- the library and the office is heated by gas, and that furnace heats, there are, I just learned this last year, but if the library's thermostat is calling for heat, it opens up a damper and the heat goes up there, and that would heat here as well. So this room really doesn't ever get terrible, of course, the libraries, they have it low when they're not there, but...
Yeah, but they still have to...
And then heat rises.
But, so it's not really too bad. The oil heat, which I think, is that running now? Yeah, it's just running now. That is that side of the building, and we do turn up oil furnace.
For, when we have a meeting for here.
And then it goes, we turn it back down.
Yeah.
But, and we have to do that, you know, every time someone comes in here in the winter.
Do you, is it pretty, what's it feel like when you get up here?
It's usually like 60.
It's, the coolest it is, I would say, would be like 62.
Because you can't have your bathrooms freeze either.
No, it's not usually that bad.
You know, because the heat comes up.
That's right.
It's cooler downstairs, the thermostat is downstairs, you know, in the kitchen.
Down there, it's cold.
It's a dimmer.
Yeah, because you're in the cement, too.
Right, so...
But good, good suggestion.
Well, I just thought, I mean, and it depends on how much, like, my house is, I have so many windows, I'm telling you, it's hot when the sun, even I don't care how cold it is outside, so... And I don't know which way this faces, must face east, I guess. I don't remember, but my house faces west. Well, south, so I get a lot of...
So you get a lot of that, yeah.
And I have huge windows, they're all like that, big ones, huge ones.
Mine is south, too, and it's really during the day, on a sunny day, it's really very cozy. But, and I think that the way this building is, it's just the nature of the building. It, I don't think you're gonna save much.
Okay, all right, well, I just, I was just a thought.
It was a good thought.
Absolutely.
Thought I'd throw on everything, so...
Well, it's a good, it's a great.
Thank you for that. And so approval of draft minutes dated 12/18. So, all right. I second, I didn't see anything wrong. Russ, if there was spelling, you'd get an A anyways for me. All right, sodding of documents and motions for payments.
I have a few things for you to sign. I paid the postage bill. And I also paid the credit cards. I paid those a little earlier this time, because I got all the paper. And I'm waiting.
Postage, that's not bad at all. Postage.
Well, it keeps miraculously going up when we're not looking.
Well, and, and that's, you know, that's filling our postage machine.
Yeah.
Also, I'm talking about the, uh...
By and large.
The stamp price keeps going up.
The what?
The price of stamps.
Of course, they're always going up.
It's going up again January 27th.
I know, they're always, yeah.
I'm about to go swear at that machine a bunch, and I have to mail out those inventory forms.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm gonna have to swear at the machine a bunch, and I have to mail out the inventory forms.
Oh, that's right.
Because it jams constantly, so, that thing's wonderful. I love the big, most... Everything's wonderful. I love the Biggie Bowes machine.
Well, I have to tell you that I've done my last newspapers, but I have a girl take it over Webster. I don't know about the rest. Yep, thirty-nine years, my time.
Well, now you got thirty-nine years' break.
Right.
Well...
It's been a great eagle trip, you know.
Saving on the club.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Notice how much it saves.
All right, anybody else?
I would like to call a very fast non-public section under RSA, uh, nine-one-eight-three, section two-eight personnel.
So, thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight, and we are going to go in a non-public, and so, um...
And you will adjourn.
And they will immediately adjourn, once Dana says it's okay. No, as soon as we're done. Happy New Year.
And we're gonna make a motion to go into it with the time.
All right, oh, a motion to go into a public meeting at seven oh one.
Holy gross.